Being seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Baspas?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Bauer?
Here.
Commissioner Collins?
Here.
Commissioner Gary?
Here.
Commissioner Lynn?
Here.
Commissioner Twardy?
Here.
Okay, we're all here. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, we had an elected official that passed away a little more than a week ago, Judge Liz Church, and if at this time we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you, thank you very much. I would ask those with cell phones if they would please put them on vibrate or turn them off, we would appreciate it. Talk a little just briefly before we start the meeting, just the solar eclipse that happened today was a large event, happened to be at Lake Superior State University, well over 600 people I would think, they ran out of glasses, I happened to go by and just see what the crowd, and I realized what they were doing, so I pulled in and tried to get a pair of glasses, they were all, they were all gone, but I had a chance because other people had all kinds of equipment, and there were telescopes and other paraphernalia that they were using, taking pictures with their cell phones, but the glasses were really great, and that doesn't happen very often around here, so, if not a total eclipse, and that's why we want to talk about this gentleman that normally sits here to my left, Steve Canelo, this is the second meeting he's missed in almost 40 years, I think 38 years, and Steve, as I understand it, is in Tennessee to see the total, total path, totality path of the eclipse, so he is down there, and he saw that today, I'm sure, because he saw the whole thing, the total eclipse, so...
So he can't FaceTime this?
Yeah. No.
Does he get docked at all, that's in this meeting?
Probably not.
Probably not.
So, moving on, we have another guest with us, who's really not a guest, Linda Hoath from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, we had another tremendous weekend in the city this past weekend, in the area, so we want to talk a little bit about the Harley Owners Group, otherwise known as HOG, and we just briefly want to talk a little bit about the impact and what that really means to the community, and what a great time they had.
Well, the first thing I'd like to do is to thank the partners that I had in this huge event, we've been working on it for a year, so I want to thank Kuwaiton Casinos because they were a big partner in this, and the Downtown Development, Justin, I couldn't have done it without Justin, I said the business owners, everybody that got involved, and I'll tell you what, the biggest, the biggest thank you goes to my staff, I said we couldn't have pulled this off without them, I said it was amazing to watch, I want to thank Billy Lynn for last minute helping me get the, so I could put a tent up, and Michael, I said thank you so much because if, we wouldn't have had it downtown on Thursday night had it not been able to put the tent up, so you got to thank everybody, I mean the whole community, everybody, people that put signs out on there all over, you know, I mean I even saw it at Neville's and Welcome HOG Rally, I said everywhere there was people putting things out welcoming them, well HOG Rally started about, about a year ago, just a little, not quite, they contacted our office, I got the message, and with five minutes I had called them back, and from then on, we worked very, very hard bringing them up here, showing them around the Sioux, making sure that they knew everything we had, I spent a whole weekend just going from attraction to attraction at a time when there weren't any open, and going to the hotels, and going downtown into different restaurants, and all the different places, showing them what we could do, I have to say, the CVB staff put together all those routes that they had, we put them all together for them, so when they could travel, which they only did probably one day, and it was wonderful, I mean it said it couldn't have been done without everybody working together on it. Okay, the final count was 1,660 registrations, second largest in the nation for CV, for HOG Rally, and HOG Rally, you know, is specialized, it's not just a group here and a group there, it's, it's actually Harley Owners Group, those people belong to it because they are true believers in Harley-Davidson, and so they brought in, you know, 1,660 registrations, you could see that on Thursday night pouring down rain with bands playing, you know, I still can't believe they played with water that was probably about five inches deep, wouldn't you say?
Oh, easy.
And they put all their electrical things in buckets, and kept right on playing, great band, so it was, it was really, really good, and you know, we have to thank Sioux Schools for the school buses that they use, because transporting them down, and especially on Thursday night, I called them on Wednesday to, I had to get an extra bus, it was raining, pouring down rain, we had to have an extra bus, so, and they gave us an extra bus, so we had, I said the whole community came together and be very, very pleased at how it, I'm elated, you know, and Friday they had, we had that Thursday, and then they had Friday down at Kuwaiton at night, and they were out and about all day, I talked to Sioux Lacks Boat Tours, and they think they had about 250 of them on the boat tours, so there's, you know, a lot of the money was spread all over, I do know on Saturday though, with the weather nice, they did some of those excursions out of town, they were up at the Blueberry Festival, and they were all over, and then Saturday afternoon we had the parade, and we had over 500 bikes in that parade, it was amazing to see, I got to ride in the front, on a Harley, I was happy, I said that was great payment, I have to thank you, Mayor, for being there and welcoming them, and Oliver for showing up, it was wonderful, I really appreciate everybody, all of you, everybody that played a part, so, thank you, thank you, thank you, and I think that we probably, I've been putting my numbers again over for the whole region, it probably brought in about a million and a quarter.
For the weekend, it was great.
For three days.
Good, thank you, thank you very much, we, we've talked a lot about the volunteerism and the activities that can happen without people stepping forward and giving of their time, so, just another example, but thank you for coming, and I know you're, you're having other engagements, so, thanks again.
Yes, and I guess I, Justin, believe in me, when I tell you it can work, it can work, thank you.
Okay, thanks Linda. Okay, but that will go on to the agenda, item number one, public comment on scheduled agenda, agenda items, any person may reserve time to speak on an agenda item, not to exceed three minutes per person, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an agenda item? Okay, here now we'll move on to the consent agenda, Assistant City Manager.
A, minute approval, one, approval of the minutes of the regular city commission meeting of August 7th, 2017, recommended action, approve the minutes of the regular city commission meeting of August 7th, 2017, item two, acceptance of the minutes of the following boards and commissions, A, Airport Advisory Board of July 13th, B, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority of May 9th, C, Community Services Board of June 27th, D, Economic Development Corporation of July 11th, E, P E H P Police Patrol Unit of July 26th, F, P E H P Police Sergeants Unit of July 27th, G, Police and Fire Pension Board of May 17th, H, Police and Fire Pension Board of June 28th, and I, Tifa 3 of May 9th, recommended action is to accept the minutes of the various boards and commissions. Item B, appointments and resignations, one, appointment to the Downtown Development Authority, recommended action, appoint Benjamin Duff to the DDA to fill the balance of a term to expire April 1, 2020, and appoint Debbie Jones to the DDA to fill the balance of a term to expire on April 1, 2018. Item two, reappointment and appointment to the P E H P Police Unit, recommended action is to reappoint Steve Canelo to the P E H P Police Unit for a term to expire on December 3rd, 2017, reappoint Kristen Collins and Don Martin to the P E H P Police Unit for a term to expire on December 3rd, 2018, and appoint Lori Gerke to the P E H P Police Unit to fill the balance of a term to expire December 3rd, 2017. Item three, under appointments and resignations, is reappointment to the P E H P Police Sergeants Unit, recommended action is to reappoint Kristen Collins and Tom Swanson to the P E H P Sergeants Unit for a term to expire March 4th, 2019, and reappoint Steve Canelo and Fran DeChano to the P E H P Police Sergeant Unit for a term to expire March 4th, 2018. Item C, City Managers Report, one, ratification of emergency expense for the ambulance repair, recommended action is to ratify city administration's emergency expenditure of $16,000 and accept all reimbursements from Ford Motor Company for this engine replacement. Item two, under City Managers Report, is authorization to waive sealed bids for the purchase of pedestrian crossing rectangular rapid flashing beacons for West Easterday Avenue, recommended action is to waive the requirement of the purchasing ordinance for the solicitation of bids for the RRFBs and authorize the city manager to approve the purchase of the equipment. Item three, approval of an agreement for advanced life support intercept services, recommended action is to approve the use and implementation of the agreement for advanced life support intercept services as presented. And item four, acceptance of the Michigan Fire Marshal's Office Grant Training Funds, recommended action, accept the Michigan Fire Marshal's Office Grant Training Funds of $8,900 for hazmat training for the fire department with no local matching funds required for the grant.
Okay, thank you very much, is there a Commissioner that likes something further explained on the consent agenda? What I would like to do is just briefly ask the City Manager on C2, which is Lake Superior State and the pedestrian walkway and the construction on Ryan, just to talk, just briefly on the activities going on there with the beacons, City Manager?
Thank you for that question, Mayor, just a brief update on this project, it's been an excellent collaboration involving the city, Lake Superior State University, and many partners, right now, city administration is working to complete substantial amount of the scope of the project by the middle to end of next week, right now, we are awaiting signage from our supplier regarding the non-motorized pedestrian crossings and bicycle lanes, and it's our anticipation that those sign, signs will be installed on the same, at the same time or on the same day that the striping is completed. What's in front of the city commission is authorization to waive sealed bids for the purchase of the rectangular rapid flash beacons, it's important to note that we would not be eliminating the bidding process, we would instead be soliciting quotes from known suppliers rather than adding the extra layer of requesting sealed bids on, in the interest of timely completing the project within the next week, week and a half, there are very well-known suppliers for these items, and we would anticipate the total cost for the flash beacons to be between $14,000 and $18,000, and these are the same type of flashing beacons that are in front or adjoining J.K. Albowatting School. Now, just to note, we did receive notification from Lake Superior State University that there will be significant landscaping improvements, next year they'll be looking to install signage close to the interchange, and additionally installing approximately 30 to 40 trees along the southern portion of Easterday Corridor, again, certainly appreciate the collaboration, and the recommendation in front of the city commission would allow us to solicit the quotes without the additional step of receiving the sealed bids, it's been favorably reviewed by the city attorney, and to award the project to the low bidder meeting specifications in the interest of the city.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Twardy.
I so move that we approve the consent agenda.
Support, it's been moved and supported, are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item three, special orders of business, A, public hearing on confirmation of special assessment role for West Fourth Avenue Reconstruction Project, which is ST-03-17.
Okay, thank you, guys, City Manager Turner.
Thank you, Mayor, at this meeting of July 17th, the city commission conducted the public hearing of necessity for the West Fourth Avenue Reconstruction Project, and held off adopting the resolution ordering public improvements until the special assessment costs have been calculated, the costs were calculated and presented, and at the meeting held on August 7th, the resolution ordering public improvements was adopted, and the public hearing to confirm the special assessment role for this project was scheduled for this meeting. The notice of the public hearing of the special assessment role for this project has been sent to each affected property owner, meeting notices were sent along with the information on the special assessment billing process, along with answers to frequently asked questions regarding the construction project, and then thereafter, a public informational meeting was held for the benefit of property owners within the project area on August 15th, the meeting was held in the city commission chambers, two property owners attended, and each attendee requested a more detailed explanation of how the lineal frontage or square footage of their driveway was arrived at relative to the special assessment calculation, accordingly, with this information being presented, it's my recommendation that the city commission first, conduct a public hearing on the special assessment role for the project, ST-03-17, and secondarily, adopt a resolution confirming a special assessment role, and as noted at the prior meeting, the total amount of the special assessments would represent approximately just under 10% of the project cost, thank you, Mayor, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you, at this time, we'll hold the public hearing on the special assessment role for project ST-03-17, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment at this time? Yes, sir, if you'd like to come forward and, you'd like to provide your name, we would appreciate it, for the record.
I'm Don, I'm Don Riley, I live at 1721 West Fourth, otherwise known as the old Fire Hall of Mount Conklin, I just want to make a comment that during the construction, the company has been extremely accommodating, there was one day I really couldn't get out till after about 4:30, but it really wasn't their fault, I probably should have gotten up earlier and parked at Mrs. Bergeron's, but I didn't, so I was kind of stuck there for a little bit, but that was only one time, I do have some questions for the city engineer, and I can get with her later, but I just wanted to comment on how good those folks have been so far, so, but it's not over yet.
True, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing, City Commission, let's go to Commissioner Lynn.
Your Honor, I so move that we adopt the resolution confirming special assessment role ST-03-17.
Support. It's been moved and supported, are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes, motion carried, thank you.
Item B, under special orders of business, is public hearing on the Downtown Facade Project, CDBG Grant Project Accomplishments.
Okay, thank you, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, as a commission is aware, the city received a community development block grant from Michigan Economic Development Corporation for the Downtown Facade Project, the grant requires that a public hearing be held to discuss the project's accomplishments prior to the closeout of the grant, DDA Director Nupper is here tonight to present on this matter, and following his presentation, it would be my recommendation that the city commission hold the duly scheduled public hearing to allow for public comment regarding the project, and secondarily, accept and place on file the report regarding the aforementioned activities.
Okay, thank you. Evening, Justin.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, I have a short PowerPoint showing some of the photographs that many of you have seen, and of course, many of you have seen in person, the federal, the grant that we received through CDBG, that stands for Community Development Block Grant, is through Housing and Urban Development, and one of the things that we have to do is make sure that we are properly taken care of, anytime we are using these fund, this funding, that we're probably taking care of individuals that might live, or businesses that might rent, or otherwise occupy various buildings that are repaired, and so, this project did not actually impact, since we were doing all exterior work, did not impact anybody too greatly, but we did have one project that had apartments above, at a cut above the rest, and so we had to notify the tenants there and make sure that they knew that they were going to be having construction going on, so, that's what this public hearing would probably allow for, is people that could have concerns about how it was handled, but we, I think we did it all right, so, we had five projects, it was started in 2014, the last, the last bit of this project was accomplished down at Island Books and Crafts in November of 2016, so just about six months ago, we finally completed the buildings, over $497,000 was funded by the federal government via the state of Michigan's Economic Development Corporation, oh my goodness, well, you don't get to see the pictures, maybe I have it somewhere else, it somehow only has one page, anyway, that's all, that's all I have, we, that's a very short slide, so, you get some text, but we do have that available, perhaps we can share it on the city Facebook page, or I can pull it up a little bit later for a secondary thing I had to work on, one other thing I wanted to mention really quickly on an unrelated topic, if it's all right, from Linda Hoath's discussion was to thank, especially thank Pat Cleary and Cleary Rentals for the tent location for the bike rally, that was, most of his property was covered by that tent, and I wanted to make sure that he was thanked.
Okay.
Any other questions on this?
I think Commissioner Bauer has a question.
Don't worry about the slideshow, it'll just give people one more reason to go downtown.
Absolutely.
Any questions, Commissioner Twardy?
Yeah, I have a question, so when you're looking at those dollar amounts, were those the dollar amounts that, that the, the state provided for the grant funding, and then what was, so just, so we can give recognition to those five property owners, what was the matching grant amount, because when, say you're specifically, you're looking at Island Books and Crafts, and there was $144,000, what was less's?
Sure, yeah, each property, for this round of grants, the projects were so high impact that in 2014, the state was offering a 75% match, so, buildings like a Cut Above the Rest, 548 Ashman Street, that one costed over $80,000, the state pitched in about 50 of that, the U.P. Engineers Building was at $140,000, and the property owners had to put in approximately 35, about 40 of that, Island Books and Crafts was over $212,000, and the property owners' contribution was about $60,000, the Historical Society was $208,000, and their contribution was about $60,000 as well, and then 111 Ashman Street, where Lewinsky and Brewster was located, that, that was the most affordable, it's a smaller building, that was about a $40,000 project, and the property owner had to put in about $12,000 of that, so, those were very high-level matching grants, but you're still talking, you're still talking probably over near half a million dollars all told that have come out of these investments, and one other thing to mention is, really neat things have happened since the grants were completed, the owner of Island Books and Crafts, Les Townsend, invested another quarter million into his building in the upstairs and interior, and that resulted in about 10 new jobs being created with bump and top, the new baby store, U.P. Kids expanding their staff, and then two buildings are actually probably going up for sale and will be developed, and new businesses and apartments added over time, so there's some major impacts, and we're working on another six to eight buildings as we speak, the state is offering a 50% grant at this stage, just due to the competitive nature of the grants, but we have a number of building owners very interested.
Thank you, I, I just think that's a really good thing to say thank you to all those property owners for reinvesting back into our downtown area, or anyway, anywhere in Sioux-St. Marie, and I think Lewinsky and Brewster, that building, that was such a profound change in the facade of that building, it, I know it was one of the smallest ones, but when you look at what they uncovered with the historical windows and everything that were behind all that wood, it's, it looks amazing, so, thank you so much.
I do, I did just remember, I think I have it in my email, if the Commissioner would like to hold on one second.
If you can, and we can talk a little bit about them while you're getting them, because this is the, the final closeout of the grant, so that over this 16, 18-month period, we've been talking about these facade restoration grants, and what a impact that they have made in the downtown area, and people talking about the murals and the facade restoration program, and all that has just continued to make the vitality of the downtown area, much more of an experience for folks that come down, so...
Absolutely.
And the six or eight that you have in the, in the hopper that are presently moving forward, hopefully, and I guess, you know, without question, the amount of work that Justin and his staff do to make these things happen, because he, he spends so much time just the legwork on making sure that what was supposed to happen, happens, he's become a construction, almost a construction consultant, and we'll call him an engineer, because I know he had to go to school for that, but I bet your knowledge of the construction activities is much more involved than, or you ever thought it was going to be?
Yes, and it's really fun, and I would like to thank City Manager Turner as well, he, he signed, he was the official signature on all of the grants, and he probably signed hundreds of documents over the last two years, to make sure that we got paid on time, we did get the pictures, I finally got them up, so this is a Cut Above Salon, if you can remember that before, it was covered in red metal paneling, going back to the, I believe it was called the Sweet Sue Bakery, something like that, and so the whole storefront, you can see the windows were downsized with kind of rotten plywood around them, and, and this is a partial photo of it after, with the new storefront, I didn't quite get the angle right, but that's located at 548 Ashman, a lot of brickwork, a brand-new storefront, brand-new signage, brand-new windows, U.P. Engineers was in very rough shape, and this was before the streetscape was done as well, we had a dead ash tree, we had rotten old canvas awnings and brick, the entire north face of the wall, you can't see it, but the entire north wall was getting ready to fall into the power canal, or close to it, and over $80,000 worth of brickwork had to be redone just on that north face, and this is it afterwards, so, repainted, new windows, new door, and a lot of the detail was brought out, in the paint job especially, Island Books and Crafts was in very rough shape as well, the third floor had burned off in 1981, and it had been boarded up since, so, 30-some years of the upstairs being boarded up, it was used for storage, when that was all completed, you have, just the glass alone was $120,000 for 30 windows, the windows are eight feet tall, they're massive windows, and now, the corner office is filled up, up on the second floor, corner office with seven employees, and the far-left corner of the photo is where bump and top moved in with their baby store, that was the old Chamber of Commerce headquarters back in the 1950s, and hadn't had anything besides a snow blower parked in there since then, so, major changes there, and a big thank you to Les and Kelly Townsend, who owned that building, and then the Historical Society, everything was boarded up, the, that was damaged in the 1981 fire as well, the very top of the building was covered in plywood, you can see that runs along the top, that used to say the Sioux News, and Governor Osborne had built that building back in 1887, I believe, and that was, you could literally take the brick up, up there and just crumble it in your hands, it was so rotten, and so we had to build a brand-new, you can see now, the cornice piece at the very top, that fancy trim piece was, was taken down, and that was a $10,000 restoration just on that, they did it like a classic car, they hooked all sorts of electrodes to it, to, and put it in a big water bath, and got the rust to come off of it, then built a brand-new brick parapet at the very top, and then they had to do probably about $50,000 worth of brickwork in the arches, and then did a special acid bath, or acid treatment on the front that turned the brick from dark brown, you can see it came out to that bright orange, and that was what they believe was coal dust from 120 years ago that was caked onto that building, and carbide dust, and then all new windows, and we found, you can see it in the first floor, the, it's called prism glass over the storefront windows, that was just covered up by boards, and those are really fancy antique glass, and then second floor got new windows, and then they actually put brand-new pieces of sandstone, you can't quite see, but all the window lintels on the third floor, in this upper picture, you can see were broken off, and the Presbyterian Church, when that burned down, all the sandstone was collected by, I believe, Jim Bork, and he sold pieces of that to build the brand-new window lintels, you can see are nice and clean, so those are hand car, hand-hewn sandstone blocks that our craftsmen two years ago just re-cut them and put them back in this building, and then Lewinsky and Brewster was boarded up, I believe, for, when it was a bar perhaps, I'm not sure, they downsized the windows many years ago and put in this kind of weird brick storefront, and it was covering up all that, except we rebuilt the storefront frames in between- all that, except we rebuilt the storefront frames in between. But each of those cast iron posts, the brown posts, were all cast iron with kind of fancy ironwork on them. The new windows are placed on the second floor, and the cornice was repainted at the top. And so major, major changes, and we hope to continue that. We have 140 buildings to go downtown. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much again.
Thank you. Sorry for the, sorry for the trouble.
I just wanted to say one other thing, and as we can thank the property owners, but also the state of Michigan, not just in regards to the grant money. But you take Les Townsend's building, for instance. You know, not that long ago, he really wouldn't have had much hope for that second floor because of all of the regulations in regards to, you know, disabilities, and having to put an elevator in, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, which is what I was told like seven years ago about that building. And now, you know, the state is more, has more of a tendency to give people like him variances, et cetera, and allow him to do something with the second floor of a building that would otherwise be just a waste.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions, or, thank you very much. City Manager, anything additional before the public hearing?
Just that I would echo the commission's comments. I appreciate the investment from the property owners and the work that Director Nepper has done. It was an immense task and very well handled, indeed. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we hold the public hearing to allow for public comment regarding the downtown facade program, as explained by the city manager and also Justin Nepper. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to make a comment at this time? Okay, hearing done. We'll close the public hearing. City Commission, Commissioner, let's go to Commissioner Bauer.
So move that we accept Justin Nepper's report and put on file.
It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Basma?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item four, communications, is from United Way. Update on activities.
Okay. Tonight, we have with us Susan Proul, who is Suzanne Proul, that is the executive director of United Way. And United Way reached its goal this past year, and now a new campaign starts.
Thanks for having me here and sharing an update about United Way. Appreciate it. Well, the exciting news is that we did make campaign goal. We topped 300,000. We ended up at 301,641. So that's the good news, but then as fall comes around, the campaign thermometer goes back to zero, and we get to do it all over again. All for good cause. United Way, we cover the three counties of the EUP, Chippewa, McInnes. And we fight for the health, education, and financial stability of every person in our community. We are the largest privately-funded nonprofit organization in the world. There are 1,800 United Ways in over 40 countries. And the great thing about United Way is that we raise local dollars to fund local problems. So do we have local problems here? Well, maybe. Just like any community or any big city, I think there's domestic violence, alcoholism, drug abuse, homelessness, hunger. I've been here in the city now, living for one year. In a couple of days, it'll be exactly a year. And people ask me, what's the greatest problem you see? It's hard to say, because they all overlap, and we're not really sure what the root cause is. But the one thing I can say for certain is that we have poverty. Did you know that the rate of children in poverty ages 0 to 17 in 2006 was 19.8%? That's in Chippewa County. By 2016, it's over 28%. Not just a little increase, but a dramatic. So what does that say? Says that our families are struggling. They're in poverty. So what is United Way doing to help that? Well, we gotta work on the prevention end, and that begins with education. I brought my mascot. This is our backpack. About a week ago, we held Chippewa County Project Backpack, and we gave out 583 backpacks filled with school supplies. But it wasn't just us. It was DHHS, the Salvation Army Rotary, and lots of donors. But the children were thrilled, just, just so excited they could pick out a backpack. Most of them were a little bit smaller than this one. This is bigger than most little kids. But, yeah, they loved it. If we can provide the tools they need to be successful in school, then I think that's a great prevention piece. The other things that we have going on, we just, we just got awarded a grant, a $75,000 grant from the Corporation for National Community Service. And it's a multi-year grant, and it's to help support volunteerism. It's to run a volunteer, senior retired volunteer program, an RSVP program. We're gonna be recruiting people 55 and older to do a couple of things. One of the things is youth mentoring. We're gonna recruit mentors to help us a couple hours a week. We're already in the Kinross Alternative High School, and we're gonna be pairing up with the Boys and Girls Club over at Malcolm High School and Brimley and Bay Mills. So if you're looking for a volunteer opportunity that is mentoring at-risk youth, that's a great opportunity. The other program we're pretty excited about, and I brought in our book, Reading Buddies. We're gonna be going into the Headstarts and reading to the three-to-five-year-olds. And the volunteers are going to 45 minutes to an hour a week, so very easy, read to the kids. I love this book because it's not just reading, it's teaching financial literacy, teaching them money. So, you know, teaching them communication skills, the curiosity and the love for learning. That's what we're hoping to do. And it is the number-one prevention piece to be successful later in life. So that's what we're up to. And throughout the year, we also do resource fairs. We have a resource fair coming up, and I'd like to invite you to it. September 21st at Big Bear, from 10:00 to 2:00. It's Project Homeless Connect. It's a collaboration of all our nonprofits. They get together. It's a one-stop shop for those that are homeless or at risk of being homelessness. They can get information and resources in one spot. We also do another one in the January called Show Me the Money Day. And that's centered around financial literacy, budgeting, how with income tax returns. We coordinate the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program. And I know USDA is usually there, a lot of home repair and home resources to that one. So, and then in the spring, we do a food drive with the postal workers. And this past year, we collected over 7,000 pounds of food, and we distributed it to 12 different pantries. So it's ongoing all year round. It's not just, let's raise the money and give it out. It's getting volunteers engaged in the work that we do. We're so appreciative. It makes my job so much easier that we have a caring community, so I really wanna thank everybody for the success.
Susan, maybe you'd like to mention the campaign chairs and co-chairs?
Campaign chairs and co-chairs. Would you like to come back on?
No, no. I had a lot of yours on that board, but no.
No, we have.
The ones that you have are doing an excellent job.
Tim and Lindsay Ellis is our chairs, and then our co-chairs is Mark and Sharon St. Angelo. So we've got the two competing radio stations, and we're gonna be doing some fun marketing between the two competing radio stations. It's gonna be a ball. We're gonna have a chili cook-off, and it'll be exciting. We're always looking for more campaign volunteers, more board members.
Commissioner Twardy.
Thank you. I just have a question. So back to the Reading Buddies program. Is that part of the senior program, or, okay, so you're looking for...
Yes, but we definitely, that's where we're gonna start, but, you know, we would love all kinds of volunteers. We would love companies to get together teams.
Yeah, you and I have to talk. I have 25 new volunteers who'll be coming to town this Thursday, so.
That's awesome. And the youth, you know, the students that wanna get involved. So we're definitely not gonna say no to anybody.
All right, thank you.
If you would email the city manager and give him the date of September 21st.
September 21st.
And then he'll get it out to the commission.
I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. Any other questions or comments? Good luck with the campaign. Okay, item number five, at this time, the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A, under the city manager's report, would provide approval for the Power Canal Trail process to continue and provide an update on the same. On this matter, City Engineer Basista is presenting to the commission and the community.
Evening, mother.
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners. I do have a presentation that I'll go over briefly, but I just wanted to go over some background material first. As you know, we've been working on the Power Canal Trail from West Portage Avenue to Johnston Street. Previous action by the city commission toward this effort has consisted of approving in fiscal year 1516, $25,000 to start preliminary engineering. Approved 3,250 spending from the Osborne Trust Fund for the Chippewa County Historical Society to research and prepare material for planned interpretive panels. City Commission approved the submittal of an MDOT Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, grant, application, and MDOT has conditionally approved, awarded that for $344,700. City Commission also approved a memorandum of understanding between Cloverland Electric Cooperative and the city to, in order for the trail to be placed in Cloverland's power canal easement area, approved submittal of an MDOT grant application, which was not successful in being awarded. And then in fiscal years, the current fiscal year budget, 1718, approved $178,300 towards the trail. But to say that the Power Canal Trail also has been actually a longtime project. When I came to the city six years ago, Barb Lasecki, the planner at the time, took me along the Power Canal Trail and said at that time they were working on trying to get a grant for design of a power canal trail. So this is not a new idea. It wasn't my idea, but it's in numerous plans. In 2009, it was reported in the Superior Reg, MDOT Superior Region Non-Motorized Investment Strategy Report. It's part of the city's adopted non-motorized transportation plan. It's been in the city's six-year capital improvement plan. The master recreation plan is a community services board number five priority project and a city commission goal. The trail is one of the pieces of a long-term objective to connect our parks through a system of trails from Sherman Park to Rotary Park. Most significantly and recently, city manager Oliver Turner and DDA Director Justin Nepper and I, July 21st, met with the Cloverland Electric Board, did a presentation on the project, and it was really to discuss the fence along the trail improvements. And the Cloverland Electric Board has generously agreed to upgrade the fence that they're proposing for their power canal improvements from, in this, for the section of the power canal along, on the south side for the trail, to a decorative fence. And I do have a picture of that in my presentation, so I'll show that to you there. So that was one of the things we've been talking about. We, again, just going back on some of our conversations, we did talk about the desire to have the trail closer to the water, and maybe some overlooks, and whatnot. But this project is being proposed right now, and for your reaffirmation or approval to continue, is strictly the trail itself, with no overlooks or opportunity to get closer to the water. The trail's currently being designed by my office, and with initial plans to be submitted to MDOT in early November. So as you can see, that's why we need final approval tonight to proceed. I always wonder why you need to screw these cords into the machine. Now we know why. It's easy to pull them out. So I'll proceed with the presentation. Part of it, you will recognize, some of, most of these slides you've seen before, but it never hurts to show them again. So the power, proposed Power Canal Trail, it's a shared-use path intended for biking and pedestrians primarily. It would start at West Portage, where we previously completed a shared-use path, also using MDOT TAP grant money, and will end at Johnston Street. So these are just aerial photos of the canal itself, and the trail. Portage to Ford is on the top, at Fort Street is on the bottom. There's quite a grade change from Fort Street to get down to the trail, so there'll have to be a handicap-accessible concrete ramp in that portion that we're planning for. And the trail will go along behind Habitat for Humanity and continue along where the parking is, at CC Hall, at Ashman Street. We still have to work with, I still have to work with MDOT with respect to the crossing of Ashman, but after doing the training wheels with MDOT last year, when we talked about the crossing of Ashman for this trail, and if we can get it right here at the proposed bridge, then we'd have to do a circuitous route on Leroy, come out on Leroy, and have people go back to, join the trail along the canal. Now, we all know people will still cut across where they wanna cut across, 'cause they're not gonna go on that extra detour to find what's considered a safe crossing. So my, my plan for MDOT is to discuss just that. People are going to cross right there. Let's make it as safe as possible. Let's make them visible. So what you approved tonight in the, to go out for, just get quotes for the rectangular rapid flash beacons, that's what is shown in this picture right here to the right. It consists of the crosswalk sign and the arrow sign pointing down, but it has these rapid flashing that alerts drivers that there's pedestrians in, you know, at the crosswalk wanting to cross. It's not a, you know, absolute stop, red light, but it just is alerting drivers to pedestrians. And so that's proposed, that's what I would propose at the Ashman Street Crossing. And then again, along, and we get to Bingham, another busy, busy inner road, and I would propose a rapid flash beacon at that location as well. Then we continue from Bingham to Kimball, along where the community gardens are, and behind the Cloverland Storage Yard and Police Station, and then out to Johnston Street. So we believe that, you know, going any further along the power canal, it just gets tight to residential properties. And I think Johnston Street is good, hopping off point to further points north to get it to Water Street, get to Valley Camp, and hopefully someday to continue all the way on a path to Rotary Park. This is the cross-section. It'd be a 10-foot-wide path with two-foot clear zone on either side of the path. And as you can see, it's upside of the power canal itself. So the amenities that we've been talking about, one is the interpretive panels. We have an agreement with Chippewa County Historical Society. They're working on the text and research for various points of interest along the canal itself, which might point to, you know, of course, the power can, history of the power canal itself. And then the prime meridian terminus, which is nearby at the railroad bridge and West Pier Point. The Fort Street Bridge is, you know, a historic trust bridge that is no longer, of course, assembled, but nevertheless, we don't wanna lose track of the fact that we have that bridge and had it, and it's still possible to erect it someday. that bridge and had it, and it's still possible to erect it someday in some form perhaps. And then also possibly the railroad bridge. We're still, we, there's a lot of ideas out there for interpretive panels, but it's intended more to, you know, give people something to look at along the trail. It's not intended to be the, like, historical water street of how Sioux St. Marie came to be, but more on the points of interest that are not about necessarily our history. Other amenities included in the MDOT grant were benches and trash receptacles and bike racks, and Justin has gotten a grant, a local grant from, I think Building Healthier Communities Coalition, but I'm sorry if I'm not correct on that, for bike repair stations. And then, of course, we would plant some, for some trees. And then this is a picture of the new decorative fencing by Cloverland Electric as, as they are proposing. So while the new chain link fence, if you've seen across, you know, you can see from East Portage, looks very nice and definitely an upgrade over, over the old fence, the nice black decorative fence is certainly going to make that area even more appealing, and especially when Cloverland gets done with all their repairs on the power canal, it'll, I think, just be a nice area to be. The schedule, again, plans that need to be submitted to MDOT in Nov-, early November. The right-of-way and matching funds have to be certified on January 8th, so that's when we needed the final easement from Cloverland, and we need to have all the funds certified that we have it. Advertising in, in March, bidding in April, and construction starting in June of 2018. So funding right now, the total estimated projects is $675,000. Now, that's the total city cost. That does not include the Cloverland Electric's in-kind contribution of land and fence, which is significant. The fence itself is, my understanding, or is Cloverland has let us know that for the decorative fence is an additional $200,000 over, above the cost of the chain link fence. So we're very appreciative of, of that contribution, along with the land, which is significant. And before, the already budgeted sources are Osborne Trust Fund, City Road Fund, designated City Gaming Transportation Funds, and the MDOT TAP grant. So the, the total funding is, is twenty, the, the funding still needed is, ranges from $25,000 to $123,000. $25,000 is just to cover the gap that we need to match the MDOT TAP grant. And that, the amenities associated with the MDOT grant and the MDOT contract includes the bike racks, trash receptacles, and benches. The other amenities, such as the trees and the other landscaping, lighting, and the interpretive panels, are not included in, in the MDOT grant. So we need, still need $25,000 to close that, close that gap, and up to $123,000 to complete those other amenities, such as the trees, landscaping, interpretive panels, lighting. So, so we would come back to you, I'd be coming back to you in November, December, for a budget amendment, so you have one more shot at this too, and before we certify the funds. And it is being proposed, administration is proposing that we use possibly a crowdfunding campaign to close that gap. And Justin has checked in with the MEDC, and it is, qualifies for the crowdfunding campaign, and so we think that there's a lot of interest in this trail, and so hopefully the public would think so as well, and contribute to a crowdfunding campaign to, to close the budget gap.
Any questions of Linda at this time? Or the Wise Week, and City Manager, you'd like to add anything?
Thank you for that presentation, Linda. Just a few notes from the presentation, certainly, again, would, from, like to reemphasize the partnership with Cloverland as far as easement and the fencing, certainly significant and appreciated. From a policy framework, it's driven by a number of long-term plans, and the crowdfunding component, I think, would help to continue to generate enthusiasm for the project and demonstrate the interest that I've heard out there in the improvements being made. Again, just appreciate the city engineer's work in continuing to advance the non-motorized trail improvements within the community, and also my understanding that Director Nepper also wanted to make brief remarks on this, if it's the commission's pleasure.
Okay, thank you. And just like to mention that Dan Dashill is here, some of his staff from Cloverland Electric, and again, we certainly appreciate the cooperation from Cloverland Electric, and that is a very impressive, much nicer fencing than, than the stuff that is there right now. Commissioner Torri.
Well, yeah, that's what, I was going to say that, too. I'm very pleased with the new fencing, so hopefully this project does go through. I see some of the members of Bike Friendly Sioux sitting in the, in the audience tonight, and as, as the liaison to the Community Services Board, I know that, that this is what we want to do. We want to be able to provide more outdoor recreation for people, especially easier ways to get around, safer ways to get around the city of Sioux St. Marie that don't always involve being right in, inside of traffic. So I, I like this project. Anytime I can get outside and walk more freely or bike more freely, I'm, I'm excited and I'm, I move forward with it, so I'm, I'm excited.
You'd like to make the recommendation?
Sure, I would love to make the recommendation. I move that the city commission reaffirm the project's scope as submitted for the MDOT TAP grant application, thereby authorizing the Engineering Department to finalize project design and further authorize a crow-, a crowdfunding campaign or other fundraising efforts to raise funds for the installation of all the amenities as detailed.
Support. I move supported. Are there any additional questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Mayor Bospas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item B, under the city manager's report, would provide for the purchase of a 2018 police vehicle. As the commission is aware, for the 2018 fiscal year, the city commission approved $34,500 for the purchase and equipping of a new police patrol vehicle. Bid specifications were drafted and sent to vendors. Two vendors submitted bids for this request, including Signature Ford in Owasso and Sioux Motors in Sioux Township. The bid opening was held in the city clerk's office on August 7th at 4:00 PM. Both dealerships met the required specifications. Signature Ford's bid was $27,520 and Sioux Motors' bid was $29,524, or 7.28% higher than the low bidder. Applying the city of Sioux St. Marie's purchasing policy and procedure section, the Sioux Motors' bid was not within either the 3% or 5% of the non-local lowest bidder's amount, and thus was not eligible for the opportunity to match the non-local lowest bid. Accordingly, it's my recommendation that the city commission approve the purchase of the 2018 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor for the amount of $27,520 from Signature Ford being the lowest bidder. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lynn?
No.
You don't want to make the motion?
No, I don't want to make the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Torri?
I move that the city commission approve the purchase of a 2018 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor for the amount of $27,520 from Signature Ford being the lowest bidder.
Support.
I move supported. Are there any questions, comments? Looking at it, you know, 5%, and we had this, I had this discussion with the city manager, it, 7.28% higher, it's just not part of our, our bidding process, and we've protected the bidding process for, for a number of years. And certainly Sioux Motors has had a number of bids here from the, from the city, but at this one, they, they weren't within the 5%. With that, I guess we can, there are more other con-, Commissioner Collins?
So just for clarification, so what I understand?
Sure.
So if Sioux Motors would have been within the 5%, then they would have had the option to?
Match.
Match.
The low bid. Yes.
That was what I understand.
No. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Mayor Bospas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item C, under the city manager's report, would provide approval for Sioux Area Public Schools to make improvements to Newton Avenue. As outlined within a memorandum, Sioux Area Public Schools has embarked on an improvement project at the high school athletic field. Part of the project includes improvements to the area currently and historically used for parking for the facility. The property is known as Newton Avenue for approximately 245 feet east off of Seymour Street, and then functions as the parking lot to the end of the property. The city plows and maintains Newton Avenue in front of the houses currently. The school proposes to pave the parking lot and the portion of Newton Avenue that is used as a street. There are two houses that have frontage on Newton Avenue, and the road is currently gravelled. The school has agreed to include the paving of the gravelled street portion in their project at no cost to the city or property owners, and in the future, the city would be only responsible for maintaining the portion of Newton Avenue that it currently maintains as a street. Importantly, the city real estate acquisition and disposition committee has favorably reviewed this request. Dr. Hall with Sioux Area Public Schools is here tonight to answer questions from the city commission, and it's my recommendation that the city commission approve the easement granting the use of property to Sioux Area Public Schools and allow the schools to make improvements to Newton Avenue. Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you for the invite. First, I'll give you a 30-second rundown of everything that we've done at the athletic field, for those of you that have driven by. It is really quite impressive. You'll recall, some of you will recall that in the very early 90s, a group got together, excuse me, to refurbish the athletic field complex, the A.J. Van Siders Field and Complex down there, and really, not a whole lot of work had been done in that timeframe. We had developed over time some significant drainage issues, which led to the premature demise of the track, and as we sought solutions, we decided that the best way to repair the track was to actually repair the drainage that caused the, caused the problem initially. So what you don't see under there is a real, real expansive drainage system that has certainly been put to the test this summer. We're not 100% sure that, that we have it quite right yet. I know that the engineer and the contractor are still working on that, but I also know that, given the amount of rain we had, there were very few, expecting problems was certainly something that we, we did expect, given the amount of rain, and hopefully it doesn't rain tonight. We're, we just cut the field today. It's, it's really quite looking good. So the, the part that you don't see, I think, was the most important part, and that's the drainage, and certainly we have irrigation down there as well. We had to pull up the old field. If you stood at the north goalpost, it was a real wavy type of thing, over time, had, had just gotten away and shifted as the ground does, and we were able to get that crowned appropriately, resodded. The old asphalt, which had been uncovered in our high school and middle school track kids, were forced to run on asphalt for many years that began to decline, so that needed to be repaired. We also noticed the, and after the track surface was removed from the asphalt, almost instantaneously, we had neighborhood people stop walking on the track. There was a lot of activity over there. We want to keep that open and will keep that open for walkers to be on that track. We think it's a really good added feature for the people in that neighborhood when they get a chance to walk down there. They enjoy it. It's nice. A lot of them have a certain number of laps they do, or they, they're out there for a certain amount of time, so we certainly would support the city if it decided to have the goose hunt again. We've had dozens and dozens and dozens of them down there, and my own kids played football back in that field, and you get a couple of kids rolling around and cuts happen and, all the goose droppings, it's not a lot of fun. So we, we do our best to scare them off, but overall, I think what, when you drive by, you'll, you'll notice the, the field looks fantastic. You'll, when you get inside the complex, you'll notice the new track. Asphalt is down. We expect the rubberized surface probably next week, a week later than we planned on, because the contractors that are doing that job have been put behind at all the other schools they've been working on because of weather-related factors there. So we're about a week behind in terms of where we wanted to be. Our first home football game is Friday, so we wanted to have the whole facility ready to go. That's not going to happen, so we're going to have a little bit of a ceremony on the September 8th game when we host Marquette. You'll also notice that the press box and the ticket booth have been totally recited, and they look, they look fantastic. New goalposts, new light fixtures at the top of those poles. I think the hardest part there was that the crew on the electric, or the light company had to draw straws to see who was going to go up there on the southeast corner where there was a, an osprey nest, and mom and dad were very protective up there. And once they got up there, they found out that unfortunately, the, the chicks didn't make it this year, so there was shells in there, but they were, it was kind of a running joke as to who was going to upset the boss and be the one that would be sent up there because they were very, very territorial of that nest up there, but, so we'll have new lights on there. Those have all been adjusted. The coach has been down there. We want to extend our thanks to the Sioux tribe for the significant donation they made to help us out in that effort. Certainly something that we couldn't have done on our own. We'd also like to thank Lynn Otto and Old Mission Bank for the new scoreboard that's down there. I think fans will be very appreciative of that as well. So a lot of really good things have gone on down there. Part of the project was, part of the dream that we've had, was to get that whole area paved back in there. Those of you that have attended football games or attended practices down there know that it's a swampy area, it's a quagmire. We have a great relationship with the city on a variety of different projects. One of them is Newton Avenue. We thought if we could swing this, that we would like to pave that whole complex, that the, the entry road, all the way back to the gate where the practice fields are, and then that parking lot. We are coming to you tonight. Hopefully you'll support us in that endeavor. We are going to commit to hoping to get it done, depending on funds and contingency funds that we have left. They have told us that even if we had booked this job earlier on, it wouldn't have gotten done until September or October anyway, so there's a good chance we won't even have it paved, whatever we're able to do for this football season, but certainly we'll have it ready for the spring, again, if we're able to do it. So the, the Board of Education is considering a couple of different financing things that we're taking a look at. What we're coming to you for this evening is your support on giving us the approval to go ahead and pave that area if we're able to, to make sure that we have the funding available to, to conduct that project.
Just let me say, on behalf of the city commission, certainly the citizens of Sioux St. Marie, paving that road is really, really something that give you, give you a lot of credit. The city, I would think, we haven't voted yet, but I would believe that would be totally in support of, of trying to help that whole area in there with the drainage, and, but just paving the Newton Avenue, I would think is a tremendous opportunity for the city and not costing the city, at least.
Well, we're, our Board is faced with the same things that you're faced with, which is we have so much money and so many projects, and where does, where do they meet?
It's still taxpayers because you get, derive your money from taxpayers unless you get a grant, so it's going to come from the pockets of the, of the citizens to do it, but we certainly wish you well in that endeavor.
But we'd appreciate your support, and if we can pull it off, we're going to do that.
Great. Look forward to it. Commissioner Torri?
Thank you. One, one comment, one question. One comment on your goose problem. This was, this was new to me this year, so one of the things that the Sioux Lox did was when the geese are trying to nest, they continuously, every three or four seconds, fire off a sound that sounds like a car backfiring, and if, if the geese don't nest, they won't be there all summer long making the goose nest.
They don't nest back there. They're, they're transient. They nest other places, then come in and feed during the day. If you hear a goose flying over top, that looks really tasty. And we do have what we call cracker shells. So it's a projectile that comes out of a, I hope this is legal, gee. Okay, good. We forgot to ask about that, but we thought better to ask for forgiveness and permission on this, but it's a projectile that shoots out, then it kind of like goes off like several firecrackers, and that's effective to a degree. We know it's illegal to harass them with dogs, per se, although we do have several volunteers willing to take their dogs down there and, and help us, and we have the same problem like the golf course does, but Lincoln School has it, Washington, all the schools have it. The soccer fields behind the high school have it, so it's, it's just part of the, part of what you deal with down there. It does, it does kind of make for a mess sometimes.
Yeah, they do, because I run on that track, so I do sprints. And then I have a question, maybe of our, of our city manager. I'm wondering if they can complete this project of paving Newton and paving that huge parking lot? I was going to ask at my commissioner comments if we could look into getting more of these rapid flashing signs, because as you know, one of the streets that I'm really concerned with is, is, is Marquette Avenue in front in front of the schools. And especially when they are having their athletic events down there, there are a lot of people crossing Seymour Avenue. And I'm wondering if there's any way to put one of those rapid flashing signs in, maybe around in that area, once they complete everything.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner. It's my understanding that this week, there's actually a training session on the Safe Routes to School program that will have participation from both city engineer and fur staff, as well as Sioux area public schools. And certainly, those are the types of improvements that administration and the school system will be evaluating as well.
Okay, thank you. Especially where we, I mean, we have children who walk all over town to go to football games and then to the, even to football practice. So I'm just thinking ahead, but if we can provide safer crosswalks. Thank you.
Agreed.
Any other questions? Commissioner Gary?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think the word of the night certainly is collaboration. We've had a lot of great projects. And thank you to Dr. Hall and Sioux area public schools. And if you end up with any extra money, we've got a few other streets that need to be paved in the city. I would make a motion to approve the easement granting use of the property to Sioux area public schools and allow the school to make improvements to Newton Avenue.
Support.
We support it. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item D, under the city manager's report, would provide approval for the execution of a tax tribunal and appeal joint defense agreement. As city commissioners are aware, the city of Sioux St. Marie is currently engaged in a significant case at the Michigan Tax Tribunal with Cascade X LLC, which owns the Cascade crossings property. Should the city not prevail at the Michigan Tax Tribunal in this case, or not achieve a favorable settlement, the community stands to lose a substantial level of revenues through mandatory reimbursements and a potentially sizable decrease in taxable value. Notably, while this case is specific to the 2017 tax year, the ultimate outcome from it could potentially translate to an annual loss for the city of Sioux St. Marie approximating $90,500, and an annual loss for all local taxing units approximating $242,900. This loss in taxable value would require decades to recover from due to proposal A. Recognizing that an issue with such major ramifications for the community requires a communal response, city administration has been working with Chippewa County to review the presented tax tribunal and appeal joint defense agreement, through which local units of government could financially contribute to the defense the city will be mounting at the tax tribunal level and as warranted through Michigan's appellate courts, subject to the terms and provisions of the agreement. Recently, the Chippewa County Board of Commissioners approved participation in this agreement for Chippewa County to share 32% to 33% of costs, as would be provided through the agreement. It should be noted that this level of support is in line with the previous agreement, which pertained to the city's and the partnership's recent efforts at the tax tribunal level with Walmart, in which the local coalition prevailed. Certainly, the significant support from Chippewa County, its Board of Commissioners, and its administrator, Jim German, is welcome, as a coalition on this matter is being formed. Being able to move forward with a communal response will provide the best opportunity to prevail at the Michigan Tax Tribunal level and preserve the ability of the city and county to provide the core services the community has come to expect. On a related note, City Attorney Canelo has identified Mr. Michael Ellis, an appraiser with Value Trends, Inc., as an appropriate individual to contribute to the city's efforts to defend this case at the tax tribunal level. Mr. Ellis has submitted an engagement letter outlining an anticipated cost of $12,000 for completion of an appraisal on the subject property, as well as additional fees and charges that may become necessary. According to the city attorney, Mr. Ellis maintains an expertise in certain aspects of appraising that would become relevant in the current case. And this current case is technically not reliant upon the dark store theory, but is much more technical than the previous case that was encountered with Walmart. Accordingly, it's my recommendation that the city commission first authorize the city manager to execute the included and presented agreement in its substantially presented form, and secondarily authorize the city manager to execute the included engagement letter submitted by Mr. Ellis of Value Trends, Inc. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bauer?
I'm sure that there's going to be a lot of discussion in the community about this, and as there was a lot of discussion about what was happening with the dark stores. And the community needs to know that in those discussions, this is not an apples-to-apples comparison, that this is, you know, not a completely different matter, but a substantially different matter. Secondly, is as far as, well, I guess we can discuss Mr. Ellis after I make the first motion. But as it was explained to us from a historical perspective, and the history on this is somewhat short, that if we don't get someone in our corner who has experience winning this type of case, or not really case, because he's not an attorney, but if we can't hire an expert, then our odds of winning this case are basically zero, and we will be out close to, as a group, a quarter of a million dollars every year. Therefore, I move that we authorize the city manager to execute the included and presented agreement in its substantially presented form.
Support.
So move supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Commissioner Bauer.
I also move that the commission authorize the city manager to execute the included engagement letter submitted by Mr. Michael Ellis of Value Trends Incorporated.
Support.
The movement's supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item E, under the city manager's report, would provide approval of a franchise agreement with Charter Communications. In late 2006, Public Act 480 of 2006 was enacted by the state of Michigan. This act standardized the process through which cable operators and municipalities enter into franchise agreements, which permit cable operators to offer services within a community and utilize public rights of way. Prior to the enactment of Public Act 480, municipalities would either negotiate directly with providers or negotiate with providers in conjunction with other local units of government. Prior negotiations encompassed a variety of topics. In contrast, Public Act 480 provides a standard agreement that must be utilized by providers and municipalities. Included for review and consideration by the city commission is a uniform video service local franchise agreement submitted to the city by Mr. Don Gladwell, state government affairs manager for Charter Communications. The primary provisions that can be determined by the city under Public Act 480 address the franchise fee that can be collected by the city and the public educational and governmental fee that can be collected by the city. As a note, the current franchise agreement was implemented by Charter without the concurrence of the city under state statute in 2007. At the time, the city had been advised not to sign the agreement. Subsequently, in late 2010, the city agreed with Charter to take action to approve a franchise agreement in exchange for the ability to implement the 1.5% franchise fee that is currently collected by the city. Importantly, the franchise fee has, over the past three years, generated revenue in an average amount of $59,410. The revenues have been an important source of funding for approved activities. Critically, it should be noted that the renewal agreement offered by Charter Communications would last for a 10-year term as required under state law. The agreement is non-exclusive, according to the Michigan Public Service Commission, meaning that it would not prevent or preclude other providers from servicing the community. In order to promote informed decision on the franchise fee and peg fee, research was conducted to determine the fees charged by a variety of other Michigan municipalities. In essence, not every Michigan municipality charges a franchise or peg fee. However, for those that do charge a franchise fee, the average fee is approximately 3.75% amongst those communities researched. Notably, Traverse City, Newberry, Marquette, and St. Ignis all charge a 5% franchise fee, with Escanaba charging a 2% franchise fee, both Hancock and Houghton charging a 3% fee, and Alpina charging no fee. Additionally, amongst research communities, only Traverse City charges a peg fee. Of particular note, a number of communities indicated that they direct revenues generated through the franchise fees for specific purposes or to support the core services expected by their citizens. For example, St. Ignis reports that it splits revenues between its equipment fund and for recreational purposes that are derived from the franchise fee. Charter has also reported that across the board, many municipalities have increased their franchise fees due to the general economic challenges facing Michigan municipalities in an effort to ensure consistent municipal service delivery. Most importantly, it should be noted that Public Act 480 requires municipalities to approve such agreements within a 30-day window of time. And in this instance, the city has until August 23rd to approve the franchise agreement with an established franchise fee or peg fee. Accordingly, it's my recommendation that the city commission authorize the city manager to execute the presented franchise agreement with Charter Communications, including a 1.5% franchise fee that is currently in place and not implementing a new peg fee or otherwise as directed by the city commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bauer?
I'm not going to make the motion. I'll leave that for somebody else. But I just have a comment, because we have until August 23rd. So you want to wait a couple days so we can like really get to that last-minute field?
Commissioner Collins?
Do other service providers, do we charge them a franchise fee as well, so like DirecTV, other companies like that? Or is it just Charter?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner. The DirecTV or Dish or satellite providers are not charged a franchise fee under Public Act 480. This is exclusive to Charter, which the legislation was adopted under the theory that a company like Charter has a morbid impact on the rights of way of the municipalities.
Commissioner Lynn?
So move the city manager's recommendation.
Support.
The movement's supported. Are there any, is there any discussion? I think just a comment, the franchise fee has been in existence now for a number of years. And again, this commission doesn't want to continue to tax our representatives, because we have, as we would think and we know, the water rates, the property tax rates are something that we don't like, but it's something that costs of doing business. If we can keep this and survive at 1.5, then I think that's where we would like to go with that. So knowing that other communities charge a little more, I think if we've been doing okay with the almost little over $59,000 in revenue, my sentiment would be to keep it there, and I would think the commission would also agree with that. So that's a comment I have ahead of the vote, but I think we all feel that way. Can we go for the roll call, please?
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Prior to the conclusion of the city manager's report, a few updates that have been requested or are being provided, including the fact that there will be a public information meeting on Wednesday, September 6th, in the city commission chambers from 5:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. This is a public informational meeting that's being provided by M.D. regarding the Roundabout and Businessburg Reconstruction Project. Information on that project will be, or on the meeting will be included on the city's Facebook page, as well as the website, and certainly encourage anybody with an interest to attend. Additionally, an update regarding the introduction of House Bill 4892. This is legislation that was introduced by Representative Chatfield on August 16th that would allow the local deadlines for the filing of nominating petitions to be accepted by the Secretary of State. Therefore, moving the deadline for the submission from the statutorily required 15th Tuesday prior to the primary back to the 11th week prior to the primary, and would allow those individuals, those seven individuals who fired, who filed, excuse me, their required number of nominating petitions to have their names placed on the ballot. And finally, one more update regarding work that has been completed recently on South Street. We appreciate certainly everybody's patience as the West Fourth Avenue Reconstruction Project proceeds. And the street department is continuing to perform ditching, hauling gravel, and perform brushing and tree removal in the area. With the torrential rain that has come, there certainly were situations involving erosion of the roads, which have been corrected. So certainly, we appreciate everybody's patience, the feedback. Just a reminder, in the wettest times, alternate routes can be taken, and the official detour route utilizing West 20th Street to the Businessburg is certainly open for accessibility as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Any questions, the manager? Thank you for those updates. At this time, we go to item number six, managed by the public. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment at this time? Yes. Chief Riley?
Evening, John. Sioux area schools, Dr. Hall and the city have been in discussions for quite some time regarding a new crossing at Marquette and Minneapolis. The commission did approve that and the hiring of a crossing guard. I'd like to put a reminder out that the city is accepting applications for a crossing guard. The deadline, are we sticking with this Friday, Robin? Or are we going to go with?
We can go with what Dr. Hall placed out on their Facebook page, was September 1st.
September 1st would be the deadline. Applications have to be turned into the city clerk's office by 4:00 p.m., September 1st. Applications, there is a posting on the city's website of the position, and you can draw an application from the website or pick one up at City Hall. It's a very important position, the hours. The kids rely on a crossing guard. Through our discussions, Dr. Hall proved to us that it really needs a crossing right there. And a crossing guard is going to be instrumental for the kids' safety. It'll be in the AM when school is in session, 7:00 to 8:00. In the PM, 2:50 to 3:30. The individual must be a minimum 18 years of age, must have a valid driver's license, must have reliable transportation. And that's about it. Anything?
As long as you're at the podium, and you had an article, maybe a month ago or three weeks ago, about speeding in the community?
Yes, it's a program that the police department initiated.
If you'd like to just mention that again, because I think now with schools starting here shortly, people have to be responsible when they're driving, and be driving responsible. And we have a number of, you see it all, I mean, you see it all the time, speeding going on in our community. We've discussed it here. If we can just continue to mention that, you know, it's unlawful, so I'll let you take care of that. But I would think that we just continue to mention every chance we get about going too fast.
Yeah, it's every year, especially when the temperatures warm up, the city, and we're not alone in this, this is all over the place. The city sees more speeders. We get more complaints from citizens, from residents, about cars and trucks speeding down their street. And for some reason, this year, we got a lot. Mayor, I think you had some, city manager gets them, I get them. So I looked at a program and come to find out they're all over the country. These types of programs are started up every time the weather starts to turn warm. And it's, the police enforce heavily speeding laws in their communities. We started it, I believe it was the beginning of August. By the time we had it put together, the officers report to me at the end of each shift, either through an email or a memorandum, how many traffic stops they made for speeding. They're still enforcing all the other traffic laws, but we're, right now, we're focusing on speeding. How many traffic stops, how many tickets are issued, and how many warnings are given. Sometimes, a warning is just as good, if not better, than a ticket. My daughter was stopped and was given a warning, and she was crying when she told me about it, because she was worried about what the old man was going to do. This was a while back. And Mayor, and we're going to continue this? I'm not going to put a deadline on it, because then it'll tell everybody, okay, I can speed now. But we will see this every spring through the fall. We're going to continue this because of the complaints that we get.
And that certainly includes distracted driving, too.
Like I said, we're going to enforce, we still enforce all the traffic laws, but the officers are primarily focusing right now on speeders, mainly residential areas. Mayor, you mentioned schools starting up. I just emailed Scott from the Evening News, a press release, it's about a page long, on bus safety, walking to school, just all kinds of stuff regarding going to school. So I'll put a shameless plug and see if we can get Scott to get it in the paper.
Thank you. Commissioner Twardy?
Yeah, well, just a question, maybe it's even for Robin. How's the application process looking for the crossing guard? Because I don't really need another job, but I know this is one of the things that I'm really concerned with. If I need to, I'll put in an application. I'm really concerned with, and if I need to, I'll put in an application.
We originally closed the application period last Friday. We did not receive any applications, so that's why we released it back out today.
Okay.
And that's why Chief Riley is speaking about it this evening, in hopes that will attract some applicants.
I know we have a commissioner who's going to be retired here in not too long. I mean, you know, Bill Lynn, me and you.
Commissioner, I was going to say, this is ideal thing for a retiree to pick up. You know, it's a half hour or so, and it's $22 per day, and a little bit in the morning, a little bit in the afternoon. The school is going to be putting, posting the ad on their Facebook page, because like Robin says, we don't have any applications. If this position isn't filled, I have to, by law, staff it with a police officer.
Okay. I'll look around. Thank you.
That might be a good idea for the first week, anyway.
He'll be sitting in the wings.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any kind of retirement involved in that $22?
You'd have to talk with him.
Because I know there isn't, but being on the city commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, going, anyone else? Item number six, matters presented by the public. If not, we'll go on to the city commission, item seven. Commissioner Baker?
A couple things. One, I just want to give a big shout out to everyone at the Sioux Theater and all of our sponsors for the Raise a Roof Project. The roof got started this week, so it's super exciting. Want to let everybody know, though, it's not over. They still need some more money to finish it. I know the bid came in under what they expected, so they were able to do a little bit more work than expected, but there's still a little ways to go. So I just want to thank the Shekopee Tribe for donating to that, the Rotary Club, the Hunter Women with a Heart, and of course, all of our local businesses. I'm pretty sure every single one, at least in our downtown area, and then Kewadon as well, has donated to that, and coming out and supporting all the shows. They've got one more, August 24th, this Thursday. It's with Sony Recording Artists, the Accidental's out of Traverse City. They're amazing. Tickets are cheap, so get out and continue to support the roof there, and hopefully we can finish that project. And then also, just a little quick update on Beer Fest, I want to thank every single volunteer that we had. I appreciate all your help, Robin, and the mayor, and Kathy and Ray, for coming and supporting that, as well as I know Gary bought a ticket to come and show up, and Josh Juzuski from the Department of Works there did an amazing job with setting up. He was there with me and Lindsay Ellis from the DDA at 7:00 in the morning. Big shout out to those two people for getting it done. Josh Billington was there from teardown to setup, all of that. We were able to raise, we grossed a little over $15,000 in revenue. We had about $7,000 in expenses, so left us with a little over $8,000 in profit. So we'll be able to give both families, the McCready's and the Jorgensen's, a little over $2,000 each to help with their expenses for their medical costs, and then our Downtown Development Authority will get the remainder, a little over $4,000, to go to future events. And just, it was a true definition of community, with everybody pitching in and coming and supporting. It was a great time, too. Beautiful day, really good beer, good food, good music, so thanks for everybody that helped out. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Bauer?
Since one of the subject of music and such, the Music in the Park series has got two weeks left. This week, though, if you like the Potoski Steel Drum Band, then you should also like the Celine Fiddlers, they've been in before, but not every year. And it's like the Potoski Steel Drum Band, only with strings instead of percussion. So they're high-energy, high-school kids from Celine, there's, I think, 40 of them. They go throughout and, you know, mill about the crowd, talk to the folks and everything, so it's an excellent time. Then the final week, we're commemorating the end of the 20th season of Music in the Park. I think Justin's working on some prizes to give away, et cetera, so if you like to win things, that would be a good place to go.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Collins?
I don't know if it's appropriate, but can I ask a question about the bid process?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm just, when I'm looking back at what we approved for the police vehicle, it says either 3% or 5%. So the 3% is, what's the difference between the two?
That's city manager.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner. Under the ordinance, the local bidder preference is established at 5% for those businesses that are located within the limits of the city of Sioux St. Marie. The 3% applies to any business that is outside of the city limits and also inside of Chippewa County, so those that are not city businesses, but are within the county. So if such a business were to submit a bid, and it was within 3%, then they would have the opportunity to match the lowest bidder. And alternatively, if the bidder that was located within the city was within 5%, they would have the opportunity to match. And if for some reason, there was a tie between a business that was located inside of the city limits and a business located outside of the city limits, then the preference would be given to that business inside of the city limits.
So does it happen a lot where we don't have somebody within the city that comes within that 3% or 5%?
I would say that it does happen occasionally.
I guess I'm just, so it really doesn't cost us anything to, if we decided to raise that percentage, right, because it's just allowing them the opportunity to match, right? So like, for instance, in this case, if we said anybody who's inside the city, if you're within 10%, you have the opportunity to bid, and you have the opportunity to match, or 8% or whatever, right? I'm just, I guess my question is, is that I would prefer to have local businesses get the business, and if there's really not any money out of our pockets by increasing that percentage, you know, is it possible to look at?
That certainly can be a budget item going forward. We've had those discussions before, so it doesn't hurt to revisit those with new.
I mean, I know we have to go by the policy that's in place now, but it was just something that kind of triggered, came up, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bauer?
Just a very brief history on that, though, because 12 years ago, even that policy didn't exist. And now that it is, since the 3 to 5 was put in place, I don't think that we've come across that even five times. But the reason, excuse me, the philosophy behind why we don't go higher, because as you said, then the local bidder at least will be matching, so, you know, it's not like, you know, but the issue is that if you don't give people from the outside a fair chance at that sealed bid process, like if you're just going to take a local bid, then you're going to find that fewer outside bidders will actually bid, and then that will drive the prices up.
Yeah, that makes sense. Got you.
Thank you for the explanation. Anyone else?
I guess I will.
Commissioner?
Sure.
Okay. Commissioner Lynn?
I thought it was.
Well, I.
Excuse me. Did you have a question?
Yeah, she hit her hand up.
Did not see that.
Sorry.
We were looking at me.
I only wanted to say, Your Honor, one quick thing, is that it's really nice to see blue and gold back in the community this week, and I do know that the Lake State students are coming back into town, and it is move-in time, and I just wanted to say welcome back to the community.
No question. Great, thank you. I thought it was on it.
No.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Lynn?
I have a couple things. First, eight days ago, I have a new grandson. That's my, Mary and I are six grandchild, Connor Wyatt Lynn in Austin, Texas. It's our second Texan, and it's spelt with one N. That's how you properly spell it in Ireland. A lot of Irish in both families, so. The other thing is.
Spelled Lynn with one N?
In Ireland, they spell it with one N. Here, it's two Ns. The other thing I like to talk about is this very extremely ugly tie that I'm wearing that used to belong to city manager Spencer Nevel. When I was mayor, and he'd wear this, I'd give him a hard time over it, and I call it his Hermes Burmy Tie. Well, just before I left for Oregon, he presented me with this tie, and this is the only time I'm going to wear it, and I'm doing that because I want to talk, I have a short time left up here, the four city managers that I worked with. Neil Godby was my first one, and I learned a lot from Neil. Taught me how important it was to serve on the city commission, to help your fellow citizens, and taught me a lot about city government, and I can tell you, in the early 80s, nobody here was on there but me, he literally saved this city from bankruptcy. I was there, I know it. The second city manager was Henry Graefer. It was just a learning experience. How about that, Your Honor? Is that, did I say that good?
Your learning experience is great.
And then, of course, Spencer, who was just a wonderful person, great to work with. And finally, Oliver Turner. And it's so important that you have an excellent city manager, okay? And that's what Oliver Turner is. He is an excellent city manager, and the recommendation I can make to the next commissions is do everything you can to keep Mr. Turner as your city manager. And I do want to apologize for one thing. One night, after maybe two wines too many, I nicknamed him Wally, and I want to apologize for that. With that, Your Honor, I move to adjourn.
Support.
All of the papers in my mind are saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. We are adjourned, thank you.